Welcome to the Bossier City Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, June 21st. First, we have the call to order. We have the invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Tim Larkin.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us, Lord. Lord, we pray for those suffering loss from the two twins who passed away due to heat conditions, Lord. Just give those family peace in a difficult time, Lord. And, Lord, we pray for our nation, Lord. We pray for our military stationed abroad here at home and wisdom in this council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free, absent. Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Will approve the minutes of the June 7th, 2016 Regular Meeting. Will we get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Councilman, please cast your vote. Will approve today's agenda.
Council, we have one add-on. Would be number, add-on number 21, under New Business, adoption ordinance declaring that an emergency did exist or does exist in the city of Bossier City which affected property, public health, and safety due to a manhole and sewer main collapse adjoining the Big Airline Pump Station. First and final reading.
I move that we add this to the agenda.
Second.
Any questions from the audience about adding this on to our agenda today? Council, please cast your vote.
I move we accept this agenda as amended.
Second.
Council, please cast your vote. Too fast?
Too fast for me.
Ceremonial matters, we don't have any of those. Committee reports, we got Mr. Joe Buckington, our finance director.
Council, I passed out the financial report for the month of May. As you can see, year-to-date for the numbers, we're at 99% of projected revenue. Expenditures, again, are at 93% for all funds. So, again, expenditures less than revenue, which is good. There are some differences that I'll give you a little bit of insight into. For the city marshal, again, that's some computer software and the audit fees. And, again, the audit fees and the computer software is just a timing issue. In other words, it's budgeted 1/12th, but we spent it, you know, we expended the monies by the end of May. So, we'll clean that up in next year's budget to where we time that expenditure a little bit closer to where it's budgeted. The water administration, the bad debt charge, we charged off quite a bit of bad debt this month. Again, we do that every quarter to four months. So, again, that's a timing issue. It all hit in one month where it's budgeted for the entire year, 1/12th per month. The sewer administration, same issue, and then audit fees also there. Again, the water and sewer funds and the special order audit that we had, those all hit in this period. On page four is the sales tax report through the end of May. As you can see, year-to-date collections were about 4.1% for the month of May from last year, and that takes us to 1% down for year-to-date. Next page is the manning report. Currently, we're at 705 employees. Last report, we had 711, so we're down six from this time last month. And the following three pages, again, are the detailed information on the water and sewer funds.
Council, any questions for Mr. Buckington?
So, the show on page six, the third column from the end reflects a deficit of $765,687 in, so far, 2016. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's five months through the year.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
Any other question?
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Unfinished business?
Adopting ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached public-private partnership agreement with Man Shack Consulting Group Incorporated and otherwise provide with respect there too. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Is there anyone like to speak for or against this? If you do, please, we'll have five speakers, if we have five, at three minutes. City Clerk will, again, time, and her leaper will go off, so please wrap it up. Let's respect each other, let's not, you know, holler from the audience and just show respect.
My name is Michael Walllett. I live at 707 Pine Acres Road. I'm currently an employee of the city of Bossier that it stands to lose his job when this, if this takes place. At the last meeting, I'd asked the council to look into the numbers of this because it just didn't make sense. Well, I have since taken a look into this, and what I've come up with is the contract is going to pay Man Shack over the period of one year, $2,085,501, based off of the contract that they presented. The cost to retain the employees that being let go is going to cost the city $1,703,000, which is right up front, $381,000 additional debt, not in savings. That is including benefits, incentive pay for being certified, and their salary. So, I don't understand where the savings are. And at that rate, they would have to be able to save $1,468 per workday in order to just break even on this contract deal. Based on the numbers that David Montgomery gave in the last meeting, it was going to be an overall savings of $2 million because it was rumored three, three and a half, he corrected and said it was going to be $2 million. At that rate, to save $2 million, based on the numbers that I've done, they were going to have to save $9,160 per day in order to make that $2 million savings. I'm from Northwood, I went to Northwood, I'm a country guy, but those numbers can't be done. I don't care what calculator you use, it can't happen. Because you can't stop using chemicals at the water and sewer treatment plants, they have to continue running, so you can't cut that money. You can't cut materials used to make repairs on the water and sewer system. So, where else are the funds going to come from if you've already cut the employees? There's no other additional savings you can make in that. Not to mention the additional contracting costs that this is going to incur when the people that you leave aren't going to be able to handle the amount of workload that's going to be put upon them. And I can guarantee you that's going to happen, being that I've been in this business for 25 years, and I don't just do distribution and collection. I've done water treatment, I've done sewer treatment, I've done lift stations, I've done every bit of it in my 25 years. It's not going to happen, there's no way you will save that kind of money. Also, it was stated that 340 repairs were done in my department last year. That is an incorrect statement. There were 507 repairs done total in my department last year. I have it based off the information that we gained. And that's with 8,496 work orders coming through my department. That's people calling in saying, "I have a leak." We went and checked them. People calling with sewer backups, things of that sort, 8,500 work orders. Last but not least, I actually myself feel like I was retaliated against in this situation because I've spoken out against Man Shack since I heard this was going to happen. Based off of what the mayor said, with the last in, first out, one of the employees that was hired after me was retained, but I'm being let go. I have 25 years' experience, I have the highest certifications of any employee in the city of Bossier because I have all five certifications, water treatment, sewer treatment, all of them. So, therefore, I feel that I was being retaliated against in this situation. Also, I think y'all need to look at the numbers and do the research yourself. Don't base your information off of what someone's saying that stands to gain millions of dollars in this contract. Thank you.
Got some question. Could I ask you a question? The, what you said, there was 507 repairs, we thought there was 340, but you said 8,000 something. Did I hear that right?
8,496 work orders were generated and went through my department last year. That's locates, that's inspections, that's putting grass back out whenever we dug up a yard after the grass come through, that's going back and doing dirt work, that is emergency turnoffs when people's water pipes bust in their house, anything of that sort, any work order that could have been done through the water system. Those are the number of work orders that went through that department last year.
And so, and I should assume that then y'all carried out 8,000 work orders?
Something was done on every single one of them, whether it was someone going out and looking at the job to determine whether it was a leak or not, someone went out and did a locate for someone doing the dig up. About 7,000 of those were actually locates, where someone went out and marked the ground when someone's doing a dig up where we have to go out and mark our water and sewer lines.
Locations were 7,000?
Approximately, I don't, those are not exact, I mean, I can get them, I have them here. I just have to get a calculator.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Jennifer Calhoun. I live at 907 Ricky Place in Bossier City. I spoke at the last meeting. I too as well, Phil, same thing with Mike. I don't think we were even heard. But first of all, what I want to address today, in going home and researching this, I have found a lot of kickbacks. I feel like Man Shack is not only your favorite person, but the person who's been lining your pockets. They've been the ones giving you donations. They've been the ones that are doing the current jobs in Bossier City now. There's on record four of the council members that have received money from Man Shack. How can you be fair to all these people, to all these employees, if your pockets be in line by Man Shack and Man Shack's giving you donations? How can you be fair to your employees? How can you do that? I don't understand how you can just not even be concerned with well-being of people who work for you, who make you look good up here as a councilman. I don't understand that. I've researched it, I've looked at it, numbers don't lie. How do you do it? How? So, now, I once again, I end with, I hope each and every one of y'all can sleep nicely and comfortably in your beds at night, but there are 46 people who are going to worry about where their food's coming from, who can worry about, you know, oh, wait, they've been promised that unemployment's not going to be contested. That don't give a, that don't give a flip. You can't move off unemployment, not when you've been making money, not when you've been supporting your family. You can't do it. Make a decision against this, look into it, look into it and see. Don't just click the button yes and say, "I'm done with that." They don't care. We do care. I live in Bossier. The day Man Shack walks in and that firm, the engineering firm runs a water plant and a water system, is the day your plant goes down. And now, you're putting all of us at risk, all of Bossier City residents at risk because they don't know what they're doing. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Anybody on council like to speak?
I'm going to say, Mr. President, on the, on the ordinance before us, I do appreciate the savings that this proposal projects. And that's, everybody likes saving, and I think as a city, as a municipality, we need savings and we need to stop some of the bleeding that we have occurred, that has occurred due to the rates that did not, that we did not realize when we did them before. I also think there should be a balance in having a professional service to come to the city and make a proposal and having another competitor to do the same. In this process, we've not had that. So, I'm really interested in other professional services that has that experience to do the same thing. And I think I voiced last time that we don't want any duplication of services by the Man Shack Consulting Group. But I'm not one that understand the full scope of the two contracts that they already have. So, I don't know if there's any overlap or not, I think Ms. Hall said there's none. But I'm not even against having an outside consultant to look at the contracts to see if there's perhaps some overlap so that we won't pay this group double if they were to be awarded this five-year agreement. So, I have some reservations about supporting this agreement today. And I would be, I would fail to do my due diligence by not voicing that at this, at this council meeting. And I'm not going to support the proposal before me today because of those reservations.
I'd be curious to know, is it practical to get a competitive, I mean, why didn't we get a competitive proposal? Is it not practical to do that? Is that a difficult thing to do or?
You mean to get by to look at this contract or this proposal or?
Yeah, the proposal here is, I haven't heard that or thought of that. I understand that when you have professional management proposals to the city that they don't require that. And that makes sense to me because there are so many things to negotiate that when you pick them up and then you go to another party, it's difficult. Sometimes they don't equal because of staffing, but on this, and it seems to me that might be the way this is, but I, what is the answer to the question of, as far as having a competitive proposal?
Or could we do, could we have some?
Yeah, is it possible to get a competitive proposal since that's what, that's what Jeff just said? Is this the kind of thing where you could do that?
Do you have an answer?
Well, I mean, you could do RFPs, and we do RFPs sometimes in accordance with state and federal guidelines for professional services, but that's all, I mean, you do an RFP and you're still comparing contract to contract. You know, you have to design the RFP to put it out so that everybody can bid in some element of fairness, but there's still a judgment part of it based upon the qualification of the individual that delivers the service.
One thing I thought I understood is the, is because they are managing the construction activities and the study activities, that it would be difficult to insert another group and that I thought it was a duplication of that, but I haven't, I haven't seen that necessarily on a piece of paper, but it's.
Well, I think they do have a unique knowledge of the system, but in order to bid it, you would have to put, take that knowledge, put it into an RFP to have it go forward. But they, they have the design experience and operational experience of problems that have come up in the system and have addressed those, so I'm not, I'm not saying it couldn't be done, but you'd have to get a professional to design an RFP to go out to other people that may be interested in bidding on that, on that particular proposal.
And at the end of, what period, does this have, like, at the end of a period of time? If this isn't working out, do we have a, got a look back or something in a year?
Yeah, we can, they got to come and report to the council on the savings. If the savings aren't real, there's, you know, you can always get out of the contract. I mean, if they're not producing that which they indicate that they are.
In terms, since this, like, David is the one that kind of looked into this and saw where we're bleeding at a rate of whatever, we're just losing money every year in this operation. And so, so it's find a savings or it's, or ultimately, it's increase the cost to the consumer. And that's, or find another alternative, still another thing. But what we are doing, I mean, I wrestle with this myself, but at the end of the day, I think you've got to have, all right, so you've got a problem, are you going to do something about it or not? And so, there is, is that, then is the alternative to this, raise the cost of water and sewer to all of the consumers in the city?
Well, I mean, if you want me to provide an answer, but I don't want to talk.
I'm good with anybody to have an answer.
I mean, if, you and I've served on this council for, what, 15 years now? I think, doesn't seem that long, but anyway. It, you know, and through the years, we've addressed the issues relative to the water and sewer and not having enough money by raising rates. And I mean, that is very unpopular. It hurts a lot of people when you raise their water and sewer rates. And I mean, we've gotten to that point where I think all of us agreed that we were going to pledge to the citizens of Bossier City that we would not raise rates again. And this process started, I don't, how long ago, Joe, did we do the audit with the CPA firm when we wanted to verify our figures and so forth? Was that eight months ago or a year?
About August of last year, August of 2015.
So, and that initiated this process of analyzing these, this enterprise fund, as Joe says, proprietary fund of the water and sewer. And through, when they validated the fact that we were losing, whatever the amount was, which was a great deal, we started analyzing the operations of the water and sewer and where money was being spent and requested that Man Shack take a look at it. Mr. Oliver, the mayor, the administration, has been a part of this analysis. For how many months, Cliff, if you could come up, please? I mean, he's been an integral part of, you know, overseeing the process of analyzing these two operations. Am I correct, for the past six months?
Yes, sir. That's true.
And?
For the most, for the most part, ever since the audit started, and for the majority of this calendar year, we've been looking at it real closely.
And through this process, Man Shack discovered, and I mean, I could go on and on about inadequacies when it came to maintenance, when it came to the water plant. And I mean, we could get specific and spend hours here going through all that. Could we not, Cliff?
We could.
And those amount of monies that were expended, would you say approached multi-millions of dollars?
Conservatively, a couple of million dollars a year.
So, you know, when you have that situation, you've made a pledge to the people of Bossier City, "We're not going to raise rates," what do you have to do? You have to clean up your operations. That's what a business does. They don't continue to lose money, they don't continue to do the same thing. This isn't something that we just came up with over the past month or two. Mr. Oliver, again, and I'll repeat myself, has been an integral part of this process with the mayor, along with Man Shack, to devise a workable plan that we feel as though will save, and I know I've been called down today that it wasn't going to save 2.1 million dollars, but I'll call on Mr. Russianback, please to come up here with Cliff. And in your proposal to the city of Bossier City in this public-private partnership, what are these savings?
We're proposing to save a target savings of, in excess of $2 million.
Right, and those are numbers?
Correct.
And they are true and correct numbers. And Mr. Oliver, do you agree with those numbers? Based on your knowledge of running both the water and sewer departments?
Based on the analysis that we did, based on their proposal, we have come up with the list of what we think is the bare minimum to run the utilities department to cover the difference in the, in the, in the loss of revenue. And so, we have agreed on the numbers.
So, and here we are today, and it's a healthy debate, and we listen to departments, the employees, the people of Bossier City, all of our fellow councilmen. But here we have in hand a workable proposal that has been analyzed for six to seven months over a period of time, careful analysis, everybody included, nobody was excluded from this process. Man Shack's fee, I think, you know, several councilmen may be concerned with that as far as bidding and so forth, but under, I believe it's the Drake Law, the federal law, we have the ability to select the people that are proven, that being lawyers, accountants, in this case, engineers, that have proven themselves. How do we know if you take this bid process that these people, if they're cheaper, are going to be able to accomplish? How do we know if you take this bid process that these people, if they're cheaper, are going to be able to accomplish what Man Shack is? I would dare say it took Man Shack years to even understand our system. Would that be fair? Cliff, would that be fair?
Yes.
It would be, and, you know, they just have the internal workings of what we've been, um, going through over the last couple of years, especially with the water plant and the wastewater plant.
And your fees are disclosed in the proposal, is that correct?
Correct.
And are those fees not in line, Mr. Oliver, with what engineering firms charge throughout the state?
Yes, sir.
They're not high, they're not the cheapest, they're an average, is that correct?
They're in line, yes, sir.
So, I, I, I'm hoping through this process of discussion that we're answering, you know, some of these questions as to whether what they're charging is fair, where, how we got to this point. And hopefully, you know, this implementation, if it passes, will result in this two million plus savings a year and we can right the ship. And instead of reading where last year we lost a million and a half dollars through May, now we're losing 765, that that's the other way around. And, and I think that's our, the, the oath that we took was to be stewards of the taxpayers' money, no matter how hard it may hurt at times. Again, and I'll go back to 2009, we sat here with the, um, fire and police and other municipal employees and faced a standing room only crowd of people that were angry at us. But your, your mind and your business mind tells you that you cannot keep losing money. It, and I know I repeat myself over and over, but it's what's wrong with the federal government, it's what's wrong with the state government. We cannot always look to raise more revenue. We have to look to how are we going to operate more efficiently? And we did that in 2009, and I propose that we do that now in 2016 relative to the water and sewer department. Thank you all.
Can I ask you something for you?
Yes, sir.
On the, uh, the proposal, when you first looked at your analysis, was it concluded that the numbers that you received was not accurate? The initial number of households that was going to be served, was that, was that one of the conclusion? When you start doing your analysis, that, that you have the right numbers?
Are you talking about the rate study?
Based on the rate study, uh-huh.
It's my understanding, based on, uh, some of the information that I've seen, is that the rate study that was prepared did not account for, I can't remember the exact number, but there was a misaccounting of, of the, uh, the number of residents. That's correct.
How did that impact your, our return, our saving?
Negatively.
Okay, so it started out wrong, so it wasn't going to become right because it started out wrong. So that's why we, that's somewhat how we got here too, because the numbers were wrong. So that's, that's why we needed to correct the ship as well, because it started out wrong. So that's, that's something that we need to consider, but I appreciate it, thank you.
But just let me reiterate, Jeff, I don't, I don't think that was Man Shack, that was another company.
No, I'm not blaming him, no.
And that's what I want them, people to realize it.
Right.
There was another company we had that, that getting the rates and the households, things like that.
Sure, yeah, no, I'm not a key.
I think we're still looking into how that happened. And I don't think, nobody has given us an answer yet, but there wasn't Man Shack involved in that one though. Thank you, Ben.
You got anything you would like to add to this, Ben?
We're, we're just here to, to partner with the city of Bossier. We, we, we appreciate the opportunity. Uh, we, we know that if this gets passed, that there's a lot of work ahead of us and we're, we're excited about it. Uh, so if y'all have any questions, you, you know how to get ahold of me, I'm, I'm here.
The, um, since the locates was a kind of a, a bulk of work, which I'm familiar with, so y'all have a plan for handling the locates when you?
Yeah, the, the location side of it hasn't been touched. I mean, the city has a, there's one employee that does predominantly all of the, the locates within the city.
So they do, uh?
Thousands.
Yeah, so that guy does, uh, whatever that is, I guess that's 20 a day, something like that. Is, and at any rate, that, that, that is, whoever's doing that, that's staying put or that is provided for?
That's correct.
And then the, the repairs, uh, whether they be 507 or 340, what, whatever the repairs are, I mean, you've got, you got a plan to do another.
I mean, the whole way that the department is being managed is going to have to be reconfigured. I mean, we're looking at it not specifically from division to division to division as each part of that department does their own thing separate and away from what the other division does. Um, it's going to have to be a holistic approach. All the divisions are going to have to work together, um, because it's, it's just a matter of making the department operate more efficiently with less personnel.
Well, the question that, that I asked earlier, again, that, you know, why didn't we get somebody else, uh, to me is, is, you know, the other question you ask is you're, you're sitting here and you're faced with a, with a, with an enterprise that's a problem and somebody's standing there with the solution and, and, and they have been working for us for several years. And whether you like them or had some disagreement or otherwise, they're, they're competent people. And, and I'm sure they make mistakes. I mean, you know, it, it, they need, they're going to be human beings too. But at the end of the day, I mean, the argument that David makes, okay, well, if you don't like this idea, what's your idea? And, and, and passing up, I mean, I don't think I was supposed to sit here and say, well, I think I'll pass on this one. We'll see if somebody comes up with something better to save $2 million. Go find somebody else, put an RFP together that may or may not work. So, so to me, the, at the end of the day, um, these things are difficult. And I, especially when you're talking about people's lives and families and jobs. But, but, um, man, you know, but, uh, the, the answers seem to be here. And sure, it may not, it may not be right in a year from now. And if it isn't, we're going to have to, we're going to face music then too. But, um, it, it sure makes sense to me to not just kick the can down the road and hope something gets better or try, you know, the same old thing. So I think at the end of the day, I'm, I'm going to be in, in support of this because, um, I sure don't have a better idea. And I know we cannot, it's just what David says, you know, we just, what are you going to do? Just keep doing the same old thing, so that's, that's my thoughts on it.
Ken, just, just go back to your question, and of course Jeff knows I respect him highly and his, his thoughts and his suggestions. I, I don't think there's another company that can submit an RFP. You know, these guys have been here, they, they've, they've learned what haven't been, been done as far as preventive maintenance, as far as the workings of the water plant we've had going, it's been a couple of million dollars replacing some piping and the treatment plant. I mean, Ben's been on the ground there and, and in my opinion, he, he started from scratch, he knows what's going on. I mean, I, I don't believe nobody else would come in and do that and take over that. So, um, I, I'm definitely in support of it. Like, we can't, we cannot continue to lose money. We, like David said, all the governments lose money, but we've got to stop it again, like we had to stop it in 2010. So I'm, I'm, I'm supporting it.
Ben, to your, to your knowledge, um, I know you, you just became part of the Man Shack Consulting Group. Does that group manage any other municipality, um, operations systems?
No, we don't.
Is there anyone still as, not just employees, there's other people here that would like to speak against this proposal? You know, there's up to five people that can speak if you would like. Thank you, Ben. Any other questions for, for Ben? Uh, council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached grants of right of way and servitude, final reading.
So move second.
Any questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to assign a cancellation of a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Bossier City and Bel Air Baptist Church dated October 6, 2004, final reading.
So move second.
Any questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote. New business.
Witness opening of sealed bids for the big airline force main project.
Counsel, if you, uh, just to bring you up to speed, this I think is the phase two of a three-phase project. We have a gravity main, the actual force main, and then the lift station. So we, it was a very large project that was split into three different projects. Uh, the engineer's estimate is roughly 2.4 million, $2,391,712. Uh, we did send out two addenda, uh, just a summary of those addendums. Uh, the attendance list was sent out with addendum one of the prement, of the mandatory pre-bid meeting. There were some clarifications of five issues that were raised at that meeting and then five changes to specs in the contract documents. The addenda number two, there was correction to some bid items, 13, 14, 24, and 25 to match the specs. And then we corrected the insurance requirements. And then there was a few technical changes on the drawings, so, uh.
Joe, is this that big project that's on Airline by Ellis Pottery? Is that what?
It's, it's all in conjunction with that. Right now, we're working, the emergency ordinance, which you'll see later, is on the gravity main. This is the force main that goes from the lift station to the, to the sewer treatment plant, from what I understand. And then I think there's an ordinance later on the agenda today to appropriate some money for the force main, uh, uh, sorry, for the lift station. All right, council, uh, the first bid is from David Lawler Construction Incorporated. Bid bond is attached. He recognizes receipt of both addenda. The bid is for $2,281,646.25. Next bid is from Don M. Barron Contractor Incorporated. Bid bond is attached. He also recognizes receipt of both addenda. His bid is for $2,379,661 even. Ask that you approve the reading of those bids.
I move we accept the reading of these bids.
Second. I was curious, um, aside, do you know why we only got two bids on that?
I believe there was a total of six bid packages picked up. They, they were the only ones that chose to respond. I, they don't have to give a reason for not sending in a bid.
I'm surprised.
Joe, is this coming from the, one of the bonds, the money or?
I believe it's coming out of the $22 million bond issue. And, and that's per that five-year plan that Man Shack put together?
Yes, sir. This is part of the five-year plan.
Uh, any questions from the audience? Council, please cast your vote. Counsel, we're going to, if you don't mind, we're going to move up number, yeah, 14, new business on the dilapidated structures. They should be in your folders, there are a lot of folders in the back.
The hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of dilapidated structures located at the following locations. The first one is 512 Kelly Street.
Mayor, Councilman, um, the condemnation on 512 Kelly, it was started 9/22/15. The owner came in at, uh, on 10/27/15, pulled a permit to tear the house down themselves. We gave him six months to do it, that permit expired 4/28/16. And we're here to continue on with the condemnation process. Ms. Harpil's here to represent the owner.
The owner is actually Rudell Jones Murray. Ms. Murray's passed away. She's survived by her daughter, Ms. Mary Edwards. Ms. Edwards is aware of the proceedings here today and she's indicated to me that she doesn't have the wherewithal to address the deficiencies. She understands if the structure is demolished, that the city will place a lien against the property and she's here to confirm her knowledge.
Yes, I'm, I am aware of, I'm Ms. Murray's daughter and she is deceased. And, um, I have been working with the city, uh, and they have been, um, lenient with me about getting the house demolished. And we have, uh, come to, um, resolution that the house should be demolished, but I do want to hold on to the property. Um, so, um, that's, that's all, that's all, they, they, they have been very nice in working with me. But I don't have the means to demolish it, so the city said that they would do it. But I, I have been paying the taxes on that property. I have myself since my mother's passed.
So after we demolish it, Rob and Jimmy, I mean, we do have a lien against that property?
But I want to, I want to be able to, uh, work out something with the city so that I can, uh, uh, hold on to that property.
Yeah, I mean, you can, I think you can do that.
She'll still be the owner of the property, the lien will be recorded, and if the property's sold, the lien will have to be liquidated at that time.
Exactly, exactly. So if you, like you said, if you sell the property, you have to.
Okay, so.
And she's aware too that, uh, and I think she's talked with the folks that, uh, they will allow her to make payments toward that lien as she progresses along so that perhaps she doesn't have to pay in one lump sum. She's wanting to work out some payment arrangements with the revenue department.
Yes, I am, because I, I have a residence too, so I, I can't just pay for it. I, I'm a, I'm a public, uh, Bossier Parish Schools Parish, uh, employee, uh, with the Bossier Parish School, a parish, which is a teacher's aide, so I'm not getting a teacher's salary, so.
So, so she's aware that there will be a lien filed against the property and if she wants to sell the property, that the lien would have to be satisfied in full in whatever amount that was at the time if she had not made payments toward it.
Joe, should she see the tax people over, over, over there or what? To set up some kind of arrangement, if that's possible?
Yes, sir, that would be Camilla Williams or Kim Proctor. We'll set up, you know, whatever plans, uh, we can help her with to get that, that handled, yes, sir. It's over in the other building near, in the water department collection area.
So when you get ready, just go to the water department, ask them somebody that deals with the tax liens.
I know Ms. Camilla.
Okay.
Let me, let me ask you a question. Does that work better for you than, uh, receiving a, uh, another demo permit for another six months? I understand you were trying to get another permit. What, what, how was, how were situations going to improve during the next six months to where you could demo the properties?
I would have to find someone else, because I had someone to do it, uh, within the first six months. But the flood, he had to go and help, he took a contract somewhere else to go do that because it would generate him, I guess, more work or whatever. So I would have to find another, um, contractor which I could, I could look into that if y'all would be willing to, to do that, but.
She's indicated to me she doesn't have the funds.
I don't have the, I don't have the funds to pay for that, yeah.
So this probably works better for you to, to have the city demolish it?
Well, the city mentioned to me that they would be getting the lowest bidder for this, uh, you know, for this, to do this, to get the, and I don't know how much it is to demolition.
Right.
I, I just have to take some bids, but I know, I do know is the house is an older model wood frame house, it's not a brick house. And it would take more for me to, uh, because I had even looked into getting it, um, restored. But, uh, due to the condition it's in and, um, uh, what has to be done with the electric and the water and everything like that, it was more for me to fix it. It wasn't worth me putting the money in it to have it restored or, you know. So I'm going to have to have it, that's going to be better.
Frasier, he's head of our, that department, he could.
Yeah, it's going to be better.
Good afternoon.
We've done this before by working out payments with the people. What, what the cost is gonna be is gonna be the lowest bidder. We send out to, I don't know how many people, 10 or 12. It will also be, uh, the bill from the attorney, and we have a hundred and fifty dollar admin fee that we add to that, cover some of the city's cost. Now, we have been working with, with this lady here for, since nineteen, I mean, since, uh, 11, I think, 2011 on this. And we have cut a lot of, lot of slack on this thing, and tried my best to have, you know, do it without costing her a lot of money. But it's the point now that this house is worse than the first complaint we had across the street, which is coming up next on the agenda. So that's, that's where we stand.
So like I said, would it be better if the city go ahead and do it? Like I said, they take the lowest bidder, and then you can work it out with, with tax people over there.
Now, now, I have a question though. How do I, uh, how did I incur the lawyer's fees though? How did, how did I incur that? I knew about the house, but I, you know.
We, we, we assign a lawyer, that was determined several years ago, in case there were, because she's not on the tax records. And, and she's the one, the lawyer here, our attorney, or her attorney, uh, is the one that researches and makes sure that all the owners, she helps and tries to get in touch with everybody that's connected. And we don't know that by looking at the tax records. So that's why our lawyer is assigned to, to every case. Even though it has one person, that we may talk to these people, there's a lot of times that there's several people involved that need to be contacted.
It, it, we have to hire a lawyer to protect us and to protect you, to make sure all the letters are sent out, and we have the right people that, that own the house. So anybody we hire, of course, is, have to be passed on to you.
I'd like to make the motion that we proceed with the demolition, and then work, she can work out the payment with the city.
Second.
Cover the cost.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of dilapidated structure located at the following location, 515 Kelly Street.
This one was also started 9/22/15. They came in, pulled a permit, uh, 10/20/15. We also gave a six-month. Normally, we do a three. That permit expired 4/20/16, and.
Mr. Homer Maddox is the owner of this property. He passed away. His estate has been judicially opened, and his heirs are represented by an attorney, Mr. Don Wilson. Mr. Wilson contacted my office and indicated to me that the estate and heirs do not have any interest nor the wherewithal to address the deficiencies that are required, and so they posed no objection to the proceedings today.
Counsel, could we get a motion?
Make the motion.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Thank you, Mr. Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $150,000 to come from the sewer capital contingency fund to be used to purchase property immediately west of the entrance to the northeast wastewater treatment plant, with the purchased property to be used to construct a new alignment for the Red Shoot levee. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to stabilize the north bank of the Red Shoot bayou at the northeast wastewater treatment plant. First reading.
So moved. Second. Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Oh, Cliff, do we have the, uh, the permit? Is that almost complete or completed?
The Corps of Engineers has received the permit. We've worked it through the levy board. They've contacted them, we've contacted them. They've told us that they're looking at it favorably. They had one or two small items that they wanted some additional information on, but we feel certain that they're gonna approve it, because we're really just stabilizing some of their, uh, responsibility to save our perimeter road around the top of the levee and to keep the levee from deteriorating further and getting into the wastewater plant, so.
Is this something that they would normally pay for or?
Probably not.
Do you have any?
It is. It would be something that they would, you know.
In time.
Get the money out of them in about 35 years.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't respond very quickly to this kind of stuff.
So what you're saying is there's, there's no recourse?
None that I know of.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience?
Already voted on it.
Go on.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating $130,000 from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Projects Fund to split the cost of master planning the National Cyber Research Park with the Bossier Parish Police Jury. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
I wanted to ask if Sam was here, if, if it's something. To, to do the master planning, has that ever been done in-house? Is it absolutely necessary to do it outside?
We don't have staff to do it in-house, to be perfectly frank. It takes a lot of time. We're, we're overloaded with just handling the applicants and the citizens of every day, building permits and everything that we do. Some, some things we have to just do on the outside, we just don't have the staffing for it.
Okay.
Not to do it in any kind of length of time.
So, but you will give input to the process?
Planner in our office have worked extensively with the consultant to do this, what she went to college for, what she's trained for.
Sure. Do, do you have any thoughts about what, how many pieces of properties that might be included versus the 3,000, I think, that they said we initially?
I don't think we're talking about adding any additional properties, for sure.
We're gonna reduce it.
But, uh, as of right now, no, that's what the consultant's gonna do. Look at, see the reasonable size for it. It may stay the same size. What this helps us do is, uh, with a special purpose district like this, uh, i- it's hard to maintain restrictions on people's property when they can see, nothing's happening real frequently. Though these master plans help us, uh, guide development there, uh, helps us, uh, make sound decisions on where land uses should go, so that this, uh, special purpose district, uh, develops properly.
Who's the, uh, have you, have you chosen a consultant for this, or is it gonna be the same one?
We actually have Mr. McSwain here. He, I think it might be advisable if he came up and just told you the different people that are working on the project. He might see her.
Hey, guys, Mike McSwain. We, we've put a proposal together to look at a master plan for the, uh, National Cyber Research Park, and the overarching goal was it's a 3,000-acre park, and we're looking at tighter regulations on a smaller core area of that. We don't know what size that is, uh, and we want that to be influenced from a couple of factors. So the team we've assembled includes Lambert Advisory, who will be doing a market analysis, specifically looking at the benefit of a now four-star command at Barksdale, and what impact that has outside of the fence, especially as it relates to the, uh, research park itself, as well as the ancillary components of retail and hospitality and office space that may not be related directly to Barksdale necessarily, but related to the research park. And they're a big chunk of it. Another one is, uh, SKS Studios, who was our partner on the downtown re-envisioning project, bringing them back to do, uh, planning services there, and very specifically, um, working with the MPC to help, uh, develop a land use plan that will help guide development and offer, uh, better definitions for, uh, those land uses and compatible uses within the district itself. So it's a pretty good-sized team, uh, of us, and a pretty, pretty short fuse, as I appreciate it, to try to beat, uh, what's been happening with the MPC around the research park.
What type of timeline will it take?
I think we're targeting, uh, September this year, uh, to pull that thing together, I think, which coincides with some activities that the MPC has, has going on with the research park as well.
Counsel, any more questions?
I see why you don't do that in-house. That's a big job.
If you want us helping everyday folks that come in the office, it's just being possible.
Sounds like a good approach, too.
Thanks, you guys.
I like the plan.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance providing additional overtime funds for Public Works. First reading.
You get a motion?
I have a motion for Mr. Irwin.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Counsel?
What is, can we discuss this?
Sure.
Counsel, uh, did you have a question, or you just want me to explain?
Yeah, if you could just enlighten me a bit as to the, the amount and exactly what the, uh, it's gonna be used for.
Two aims to accomplish with this. One is to provide some overtime for my inspector position. Historically, the inspector I've used has been an engineer in aid four, which is a grade 16 level position. Grade 16s typically don't get overtime. They're expected to do a certain amount of overtime within their job scope. What has happened, uh, with my inspector, of course, he has to work when the contractor works, and that varies. Some contractors may work every Saturday, some work, uh, long hours in the evenings trying to get a pour in, or they may start very early in the morning this time of year to pour while it's cool, so the days get fairly long. And I've typically awarded them an hour of comp time rather than pay overtime. And what happens then when the contractor's down from a rain or from anything that stops work, they have to go home to use up that comp time, and I'm left without an employee that might could do other things for me during the day. So to solve that problem now that I'm refilling the position, I've decided, and you've already done this in a previous approval of a resolution to fill the position, I downgraded the position to a grade 13, which is consistent with my other staffing in Public Works right now. I don't have anybody in grade 16 except for the main superintendent in Public Works. Everybody else is 12s, and this one will be a 13. So I downgraded the salary also. It was budgeted this year for 40,000. The previous grade 16 employee was about 37, and now I'm filling at a grade 13 level, and on the agenda sheet, I had 30 to $32,000. So I've worked that salary all the way back down some, but now I want to pay overtime, so that I have one, uh, I, I think it's good for morale for that employee, because they do have to work long hours. I can pay him overtime for the hours he actually works, because it, it could be a lot, especially with this contractor coming up right now. He works a lot of hours. And then if he's down from a rain or anything happens, then I can leave that employee at work, and he can help me do other things during the day that might come up, like measuring streets, for overlay projects, or anything else I might need. That's been a real impediment to me in the past, because every time I have an opportunity to use that employee, he wants to go home and use up that comp time, and we really need to let him do that to burn it off the books. So, um, those are my reasons for that particular move, and that's really not an additional appropriation, that's just moving the $2,500 from salaries to overtime within the same.
That's the amount?
Right.
All right.
Within that budget.
I'm good.
Okay.
Unless somebody else has a question.
That's the one, that's the one budget, though. That's just that one budget. You got two more budgets right there.
And those, the others are replacing money that was used up in the recent flash flooding event in March. We, we worked a lot of hours with sandbag, and then I used up overtime, and I'm just replacing what I feel like I need to have in place for the rest of the, rest of the year. We have, uh, already been approved for a lot of that money that was spent then to be reimbursed, and we're just awaiting the, those funds to come back in, so, uh, a lot of that money will be replaced in the Public Services and Sanitation Fund when the reimbursement is made.
Any questions?
So as a whole, you're really not impacting your budget from an ex, I mean, it sounds like it's gonna net.
Yeah, I think that, uh, you know, the money will be replaced in the fund that we've used up already.
Yeah.
It may not be put back in the current budget, but it will be back in the fund. And then I'm just moving some money within the budget that's already there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to conduct the sewer sub-basin BC 21 rehabilitation. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please vote.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating $65,000 from the general fund fund balance to provide overtime funding for the Bossier City Fire Department. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Go ahead.
I'm gonna ask real quick. Is this, is this included in the original budget, your budget, or is this additional?
It's additional, but, uh, as Gary was saying, we used 32 to 33,000 during the flood.
Okay.
So once that gets reimbursed.
Right.
And then I'm seven people down, so actually you should net out from the salary line to the overtime.
Thank you.
That's quick. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please vote.
Adopt a resolution to promote one mechanic to assistant chief of maintenance and fill vacancy due to retirement. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please vote.
Adopt a resolution to fill a vacancy in the fire department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please vote.
Mr. Harvey? Thank you. Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of one deputy chief of police, three police captains, one police lieutenant, and one police sergeant. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one replacement police officer to replace the retirement from the department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of two replacement police communications officers who resigned from the department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please vote.
Mr. Irwin?
Got it.
Approve parade permit fee waiver for the following, Susan G. Coleman Race for the Cure, September 24, 2016, and the Trinity 5K Stadium Run, July 22, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please vote.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating $3,264,700 from the 2010 utility bond issued to repay a portion of the utility costs for the downtown re-envisioning project. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please vote.
Introduce an ordinance appropriating $335,300 from Series 2016 sales tax bonds to refund the remainder of the utility funding for downtown re-envisioning process and appropriating the remaining balance of $4,93,877.90 to replenish funds from the 2014 Utilities Revenue Bond Fund of $21,236,415.20 that were used for projects not listed in the projected projects for the 2014 Utilities Revenue Bonds. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please vote.
Elect a city council president to serve a term from July 1, 2016, to June 30, 2017.
Mr. President, I would like to nominate for president of the city council, July 1, 2016, to June 30, 2017, Mr. David Montgomery.
Second. Counsel, are there any nominee, other nom, other nominations? All right, we'll close that.
All right, we'll close that, and Mr. Montgomery will be president next year. Counsel, please vote.
Congratulations.
Can we try that again, counsel? That was my error.
What'd you do? We'll vote again.
Vote again.
The machine don't want David there.
Need to vote again.
Please vote, counsel.
Thanks, y'all gentlemen.
Elect a city council vice president to serve a term from July 1, 2016, to June 30, 2017.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Darby for our vice president for the city council next year.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? I will close the nomination. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the replacement of one civic center event coordinator. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a counts clerk three. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Any announcements?
One other.
Got an add-on.
Oh, man, write it down. Go ahead.
Adopt an ordinance declaring that an emergency did exist, did and does exist in the city of Boja City which affected property, public health, and safety due to a manhole and sewer main collapse adjoining the Big Airline Pump Station. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please vote. Excuse me. Mayor, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Counsel, you have anything?
I have this one thing, mayor, that some folks, me and Mr. Harvey, about some railroad ties that are all stacked up in the middle of the, in front of Central Park subdivision. I haven't seen it or anything, but they.
Yeah, they're, they're up and down.
Is that it?
I, is Mark gone? I've contacted him last time, they, I think they have to wait for cars to come in and pick them up, Mark. I mean, they're, they're all up and down. Is that city property, or is that? That's where, that's where it was. Railroad. You'll contact them again?
Can we write them a letter and ask them to not stack them up, or is that what they do?
They've done that for years, and I said, now I get with Mark, and he'll get them picked up, or when they get this big railcar to come pick them up. Will you do that, Mark? Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Meeting adjourned.